Tonight's Monroe City Council meeting, this is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three. The time right now is seven P M. Going to ask that our clerk Wykoff, please call the roll. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Fulter, Kenny, Hanford, Davis, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble, you please lead us on the pledge. Thank you. First item that we have on the agenda this evening is public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes will be afforded to each speaker. If you're interested in speaking this evening, please, if you're here in the audience, raise your hand. All right, saying none, if you're online, please hit star nine if you're on the phone, or please raise your hand using the remote hand raise icon in the Zoom app. All right, say no comments. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That'll be the consent agenda. I'm sorry, it'll be a public hearing. So this item is item five point one, public hearing. This is the two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty nine Transportation Improvement Plan, also called T I P. The recommended action is to hold a public hearing and take public testimony. Before we proceed with the hearing, please note that the rules and procedures that apply to this hearing are available in the agenda packet and on the city's website. To summarize, after the hearing is open, city staff will present a staff report and council members may ask questions for clarification of staff or wait until another time. As those rules are already in the packet, and I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to reference those rules rather than read them out loud now. And I'm just going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I'm going to turn to staff. I'm sorry. For the record, I am informing all parties interested in these proceedings that the city clerk has forwarded to the city council all timely, written or otherwise reportable comments that have been submitted regarding the subject matter of this public hearing. And now, at this time, I'm going to ask that that you go ahead, that staff go ahead and read in the description and present the staff report. So go ahead. And I should hit the light. There you go. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. As the mayor mentioned, tonight is the public hearing for the city's six-year Transportation Improvement Plan, also known as the T I P or TIP. This is required by law for us to pass every year to look at our ensuing six years for street-related projects. We have to hold a public hearing for the event, one or more of those, and this whole process needs to be taken care of by the end of June, which is pretty close. And then we will file that within this, or to the state within the next thirty days after adoption. Let's see here, just a second. So the R C W that we're referring to is R C W thirty five dot seventy seven zero one zero. The plan also needs to be consistent with our city's comprehensive plan. What that really means is it needs to be consistent with the capital facilities plan, which we adopt every year. We adopted our last one in November of last year. The C F P there has all sorts of capital projects, whether it be sewer, water, storm, or streets. This plan takes the streets part of the C F P. It's a direct reflection of that information. So really, it's reflecting our capital facilities plan. So, and of course, capital facilities plan is a sub-element of our comp plan, and so when you link them all together, they are consistent with our comp plan. Okay, so before I get into the project notes themselves, we do look for a lot of funding assistance on these projects. Our primary grant sources on the federal dollar side is through the Puget Sound Regional Council. On the state's side, we have our Transportation Improvement Board or T I B. Those monies, those sources provide vital funding for street-related projects. Our staff applies annually to these grants. Sometimes we lose, sometimes we win. If we win, we got the project going. If we lose, then we have to slide that project down the list of years, if you will, until such time as we do have identified funding. So I think the next slide kind of shows, yeah, there's a graphic of our six-year T I P. Some of these projects don't have a numerical identifier on the map because they're citywide. So, for instance, the first one, annual road maintenance, it's citywide. We pave all over the city. And, but the second one is site-specific location, the one forty seven signal, which was right in front of the hospital, or very close to the relocated city hall soon to be. So that's how it kind of goes. Number three is a citywide. We're going to recalibrate our pavement management program next year to see how it's tracking and updating our road conditions based on local forces developments, or, you know, something that may have worn out roads faster or whatnot. So we usually do that about every four or five years. We recalibrate, recalibrate our, our pavement management program. Item four is traffic calming in a generic sense, in that we have some money set aside to address any traffic calming efforts that we have. Usually that's associated with speeding, you know, so we buy hardware and we try and just get our citizens and the pass-through folks to enjoy our town instead of blowing through it. So that's what that line item is for. The ADA Transition Plan, a few years ago, we adopted an ADA Transition Plan, and so that item five is money set aside to find projects and kind of pick away at our list or our honey-do list of ADA upgrades. And the whole effort is just to slowly bring our city's sidewalks to current federal standards to make it safer for our non-motorized public. Item six is a generalized sidewalk improvement program. This is a set aside, if you will, for grants yet to be identified or funding. Maybe we'll have a small sidewalk project for local funds. Maybe we get a state grant to create a better safe route to school. These are, these are projects that haven't been identified, but we still want to have a line item or budget so that we can account for them if we become successful with grants. So. Of course, the ever-popular train noise reduction area, also known as a quiet zone, we have a long-range plan to pick away at our railroad crossings and make them safer and potentially qualify for a day when maybe the trains won't have to blow their horns while they travel through Monroe. So it's a, so in this map, you'll see that we have four of those identified on as number seven. One of them is being worked on. So the intent there is that one will be done, and there'll be four remaining. So. So item eight is Oak Street, or also known as Turning Place Phase Three. That's behind the Coastal Farm Supply, looking to bring that road to a better standard than it is today. So that's an ongoing effort. That would include improvements to where Oak Street ties into Old Owen Road. Item nine is another sidewalk program that actually is driven by the Economic Development Advisory Board, based on their recommended, recommended sidewalk improvement locations. So that money is there for that program. Item ten is also E D A B driven, but in general is to try and underground the existing overhead power lines, maybe even telephone lines that are along the Lewis Street corridor, just kind of clean up our skyline a little bit, make it a little more attractive down there. Item eleven is the idea of illuminating the trail along Lake Ty for some more, let's say, evening recreational opportunities. Item twelve is to continue to look at Chain Lake Road as the development occurs up there on the hill to increase the capacity and improve the safety of that road corridor. And item thirteen is a, looking at trying to create another overpass over our railroads so that we don't get cut off when the trains decide to park in town for a spell. I'm sure we've all experienced that before. But that's, item thirteen is to look into an overpass. The next slide in my presentation, it's pretty small numbers, hopefully you can read in your packet. But it's a financial outlay of where we think these project costings will be. Sometimes these programs are year to year to year. They're, they're around every year. As in the annual road maintenance, we hope to keep doing that every year. And in other times, like the one forty seven signal, it's a one-and-done job. So in two thousand and twenty four, we plan to build that signal, and once that's done, it's done. Probably just as important on the far right column, we have identified funding sources where we've actually, we, we have or are highly confident we have federal or state or the transportation benefit district grant dollars to help fund our street-related capital. And again, the staff will continue to apply for grants every year to help make these projects a reality. So tonight, that's pretty much it for my presentation. Again, the objective, of course, is run through the public hearing and take testimony. And because we're up against the end of the month, we also looking to have this resolution adopted tonight. And that concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Thank you, Reverend Scott. Do any question, do any questions have any council members this evening? I decided to just go with it. Yeah, I know. Thank you. All right. I don't see there being any questions at this time. So we're going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. If you're interested in speaking this evening and you're in the audience, just please raise your hand. All right. Seeing none, if you're online in the attendees list and on the phone, hit star nine. If you are in Zoom and would like to speak, please hit the little hand sign in Zoom. All right. Saying no public comments, I'm going to turn to council again and ask the council if there are any additional questions for staff. All right, seeing none. And unless there's objection, I'm going to consider this a conclusion of the public hearing. Seeing no pa, seeing no pause. I'm reading a script. Isn't that great? It's this pause. Okay, see, see no objections, state your name. This is where you continue with council deliberation and/or vote. So somebody save me if you're interested in voting for this, please hit your little button. Insert Jeopardy music here. All right, Councilmember Fulter, go ahead.
If you're looking for a motion, I would love to have it on the screen. Okay.
Oh, I thought we were adopting the resolution.
Oh.
No, go ahead, council member. Councilmember Fulter, have you found it yet?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, move to approve resolution number two thousand and twenty three zero zero five, that one right there we're talking about.
Yes.
Adopting. It's written in the requested.
It sounded like the right direction that he was going.
I've got a agenda resolution number that's in the packet for requested action.
Let's go ahead and go with that.
Okay, move to approve resolution number two thousand and twenty three zero zero five, adopting a six-year Transportation Improvement Plan for the years two thousand and twenty four through two thousand and twenty nine.
You have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember Davis. Staff concurs that that's the right motion. Okay, is there any deliberation on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Scott. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and I'm going to lose that script. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I would like you to please take note that on the consent agenda, there is a contract for grant funding with the Washington Department of Commerce. The contract was emailed to council members earlier today in advance of the meeting tonight. Additional copies were made available, can be made available to the public for review upon request. So that is in connection with item six point, six point ten. All right. So I'm going to turn to council to see if there's an interest in making a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Scarborough.
The consent agenda.
Okay, I understand that this is a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet. The motion was made by Councilmember Scarborough. The second was made by Councilmember Kenny. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We're going to now go on to unfinished business. Item seven point one, two thousand and twenty three Municipal Bond Update with our finance director, Director Hassert. Director Hassert, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you know, we have this little thing, you know, sixteen point nine million dollar municipal bond that we were selling this last month. Council gave us authority to do this back in May. It took us a while to get the offering statement out on the street, and then we actually put the bonds for sale. We've received our rating from Standard and Poor's. They reaffirmed our double A rating with a stable outlook. So that was very, very good news. We hit the ground with sale for the bonds back on June. Sorry, it's been a long day. June fourteenth. And actually had a lot of really good interest on the bonds. So when we were originally thinking that our yields would be closer to five percent on the longer-term bonds, they actually came in lower because we had a lot of interest in the industrial market bond market for our longer-term bonds. Not as much interest on the short-term bonds because a lot of people can make that much interest, just, you know, in their own money market accounts or CDs, but we had enough interest to be able to sell them all. So overall, good news for us. Our yields on the entire bond came in at anywhere from little over three percent to a little under four point six percent. So given what the market is right now, that's pretty darn good. We actually sold the bonds at what's called a premium. So while we will be receiving a little over sixteen point nine million dollars in cash, and we are expected to close Thursday morning, so we should have that wire in our account on Thursday morning. We actually will only owe sixteen point three nine million for actual principal over the next thirty-five years. So that meant people paid extra to be able to have those bonds to try and earn that interest over the course of the life of the bonds. So we just wanted to give you update on that. We have the certification from the bond attorney that everything was done within the parameters that you gave us with regards to the bond ordinance. That package has been completed for us now. So once we have the the money in hand on Thursday morning, Jacob and his crew can go and start breaking ground. So there we go.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very much. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for Director Hassert? All right. Just, we'll get you a little, a little shovel. A little beach, little plastic beach shovel. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item. Thank you very much, Director Hassert. Next item on the agenda is a new business item eight. We're going to start off with eight point one. This is confirm appointment, Community Human Services Advisor Board, position one, and I'll turn to Mr. Humphries. Mr. Humphries, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to confirm the appointment of Donnell Carroll to the Community Human Services Advisory Board, position number one, with the term ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. Donnell was interviewed by the mayor and staff on May twenty second, and we are requesting confirmation of Mayor Thomas's appointment of Ms. Carroll. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask that Ms. Carroll, please come forward and just introduce yourself for the council. Maybe say why you're interested in serving in this position, and thank you for your application. Let me turn on your microphone, sorry.
Thank you. My name is Donnell Carroll. I have been a part of this community for a long, long time, over a hundred years. My family's been here, actually. And I think I sat here and I was thinking, what can I say? What can I say? What can I say? The only thing that came to my mind was my heart's in Monroe. It's really here. And I, I, I feel like I can bring a lot to the, or the board, just with knowledge, just with collaboration, just with East County itself. It's got a lot to offer, and I'm here to help. Thank you.
Very much.
Yeah.
So councilmembers, I'm requesting your consideration to confirm her, her appointment to the board, looking for council. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Donnell Carroll to the Community Human Services Advisory Board, position one, a term ending twelve thirty one, two thousand and twenty five.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Gamble for the requested action in new business item number eight point one. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, and congratulations, Board Member Carroll. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. That's item eight point two. This is also confirmation of appointment to the Human Services Advisory Board. This one's for position number three. And I'll turn to Mr. Humphries. Mr. Humphries, go ahead.
This item is to confirm the appointment of Roger Bacon to the Community Human Services Advisory Board, position three, with the term ending December thirty one, two thousand and twenty six. Roger was interviewed by the mayor and staff on February seventh, and requesting confirmation of Mayor Thomas's appointment of Mr. Bacon.
Thank you. Roger, please approach the podium and please explain a little bit about your interest and introduce yourself to the council.
Roger Bacon retired here from Arizona in two thousand and seven. Have been blessed by living here. So I've been given much. I live on the other side of Highway Two that separates us economically, unfortunately, and have tried to involve myself in various efforts to help. One that I can bring to the table is a career spent as an English prof, teaching technical writing. So where data needs to be managed and reported and analyzed and proposals developed and so forth, I have some experience and am more than happy to lend it. I have nine grandchildren in town, all of whom have attended, do now attend, or have graduated from Monroe schools, and we've been blessed in that. Last, I represent four congregations of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. There, our building is across from the high school on Tester Road. Unfortunately, we, we have to have four congregations in there because of cost of building, and so it's crowded. And we're a lay ministry unpaid, so all of our congregational heads, ministers, and so on are unpaid. They asked me several years ago to represent them. I am the disembodied voice of the bishops, so-called. And so I'm happy to function as that linkage between those four groups and this very important council. We think taking care of our neighbor is and always should have been the very first priority.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bacon. Okay, and I turn to council for your consideration of the motion above. Councilmember Gamble, please go ahead.
I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Roger Bacon to the Community Human Services Advisory Board, position three, with term ending twelve thirty one, two thousand and twenty six.
I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember Hanford, for the motion that's shown in eight point two, new business, under requested action. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, everybody, and congratulations, Board Member Bacon. So now that you're board members, you're required to stay here for the duration of the meeting, which is another seven hours, or you can get up and flee now. Oh. And board members, I'm going to actually ask you to stay momentarily. Councilmember Gamble has an item.
Councilmember Gamble. I just wanted to thank both of you for stepping forward and volunteering your time to serve. It's, it's outstanding. There's a lot of us that our heart is in Monroe, and it's just great to see. And this is a very important piece, important body, especially in the time that we live in. So just appreciate you guys stepping forward. So thank you.
All right. I'm going to let you push the button. All right. All right, we're going to move on to the next item. This is item new, new business item number eight point three, ordinance number zero one zero, two thousand and twenty three, temporary meeting locations, and I'm going to turn to Clerk Wykoff. Clerk Wykoff, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you, tonight is ordinance number zero one zero, two thousand and twenty three, amending M M C two point oh four and four point one oh. In case nobody has heard yet, we are renovating city hall, which means we have to temporarily move out of this building so that we can do that, including vacating the council chambers. The new location will be the Monroe School District Administration Building. There are citations in Monroe Municipal Code that dictate the location of our council meetings and various boards and commission meetings. So this ordinance will temporarily amend the code to the correct locations for these various meetings and as well as have like a, an automatic sunset after two years of effective date unless repealed earlier or extended by council motion. In the count, just as a kind of a similar, but side note, in the consent agenda, we had two resolutions to do a similar action for council. One was to amend the Council Rules of Procedure Section six point one, and one was to update the meeting calendar because there was a footnote on the bottom of the calendar saying where the meeting locations were. So lots of little things that we had to fix, and we'll do it all over again, and hopefully less than two years to change it back.
So I want to request an amendment that you cannot extend beyond two years, but repeals, repealers are nice. Just kidding. All right, so thank you very much. Anything else?
The only thing, the only other thing I'll add is that this is a first read and adoption request because we have to start noticing and everything, and the first meeting is going to happen at the new location, the first meeting after this one. So we don't have time for two full readings.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to make a motion to move to waive Council Rules of Procedures requirement for two readings of an ordinance before an adoption. This is in accordance with what we've done in the past on some time-sensitive matters that we're all well aware with. So I'm going to make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion made by Councilmember Gamble, seconded by Councilmember Hanford for eight point three, new business, requested action, motion one. This is moved to waive Council Rules of Procedure requirement for two readings of an ordinance before adoption. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Councilmember Gamble?
I'm going to move to accept this first reading and adopt interim ordinance, zero one zero, two thousand and twenty three, amending chapter two dot zero four, M M C, council meetings, and chapter four dot one zero, M M C, general provisions, designating temporary regular meeting locations for the Monroe City Council and all city boards, commissions, and committees during the pendency of the city's municipal campus improvement project, providing for separability, establishing effective date, and providing an automatic sunset.
Second. Yep. I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble. I heard Councilmember Davis first, so I'll go ahead and take him as the second on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? So this is our last meeting in chambers, and it's occurring to me that we didn't do this with any major fanfare or anything, and right on the walls or something, yeah. So. So I'll I'll just, just note for the record that I myself have been serving, I myself had served in this back as early as November of two thousand and three, and I know that this space has served our community really well and our council, staff, and mayor really well for decades. But it is a time for us to to rebuild our municipal campus and meet the new needs of the times, which includes to rebuild our municipal campus and meet the new needs of the times, which includes reworking City Hall. So as we're looking around here, we see the pictures on the walls with, that are historical in nature, right next to photos that are recent. And I look forward to many new memories being developed in the new chambers when hopefully we're in here within two years. So I thank the staff for all the work that you have done to make this possible to get to this point. This is something that when I started as mayor, nine and a half years ago, I never thought that we would be at this point. And it's something that has been on my list of things that I've wanted to get done since probably twenty oh four, probably not twenty oh three, when I first got started. And I know that many of the council members, I think all of the council members, I know all of the council members share in that. And I thank the council for all the work that they've done to support and, and help out with the thought process behind making this possible. So thank you all. Thank you. With that, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, our next meeting will be somewhere else. Alrighty, next item then is new business item number eight point four. This ordinance number zero one two, twenty twenty-three, amending Monroe Municipal Code Drug and Code Drug and Controlled Substances Laws to reflect state law. I'm going to turn to Chief Charlie. Chief Charlie, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor and council. Our SLT met last week and I have already spoke, one of the fans in the clock. So I don't know if anybody else has an interest in any of the items. Those are already taken care of. Regarding this, the policy considerations on this issue. The city of Monroe protects the public health, safety and welfare through the adoption of various ordinance tools. One of those is those relating to controlled substances, which I'm here to speak to tonight. We intend and ask for you to adopt the Uniform Controlled Substance Act, codified in chapter six nine point five zero, the RCW. There's been a long history over the past couple of years regarding the Blake finding of the Supreme Court and substance abuse and drug laws not being able to be enforced. But I believe in the last week, possibly the last day, the legislature came to an agreement and passed a state law regarding controlled substances. We're encouraging you to, in order to be consistent with state law, adopt this into municipal code, which is the item here before you tonight. The resulting session law establishes July first of this year, twenty twenty-three, is the effective date of the provisions of this legislation regarding the knowing possession and knowing use in a public place of a controlled substance and counterfeit drugs. So you can see the timeline is somewhat constrained. This adoption into city ordinance has been vetted by city attorney Zach L thoroughly, as well as our city prosecuting organization, and they've conferred on this to ensure that all the RCWs are captured, noted and delineated to our local municipal code. So we're asking two things tonight, similar to clerk Wykoff. A motion to waive the council rules and procedure requirement for two readings, as well as moving a second motion to adapt this into municipal code so that our officers have the tools to address controlled substance violations here within the city of Monroe. The ordinance is being presented to the council three days prior to the implementation of the new Blake legislation to ensure its immediate effectiveness upon passage and emergency measure has been included in this ordinance, which is also attached to this and in your papers. In accordance with state law, the emergency measure necessitates a super majority affirmative vote from the entire council. And with that, I am available for questions and this for your consideration.
Thank you, chief. And I'm sorry if I missed it, but as noted, this is another request to waive council rules of procedure that will come before the motion to accept this first reading and adopt. Any questions or a motion? Council member Davis, go ahead.
I'll move to waive council rules of procedure requirement for two readings of an ordinance before adoption.
I have a motion from council member Davis, a second from council member Scarborough for motion one in new business item eight point four. This is waiving rules of procedure. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Council member Davis, go ahead.
I'll move to accept this first reading and adopt ordinance zero one two slash two zero two three. Amending chapter nine point two zero MMC, drugs and other controlled substances. Adopting by reference, the current Washington statutes governing the use and possession of, in public places of controlled substances, including without limitation statutes governing drug paraphernalia, diversion and sentencing, entering legislative findings, providing for separability, declaring a public emergency and establishing an effective date.
Motion made by council member Davis, seconded by council member Scarborough for motion two in new business eight point four, as shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and go down the line for council member reports. I'll start off with council member Gamble on my left. Council member Gamble, go ahead. All right. Thank you very much. Council member Davis.
So continuing education, that's what the topic is tonight. And the first thing that I noticed this, this week was in the police report that our deputy chief just completed Homeland Security Leadership Academy in Glencoe, Georgia. And I congratulate him in that. I have been to Glencoe on numerous occasions. Wasn't too bad. He was there in April and May. That's not too bad. I've been there in August and July and it's not a fun place to be. So. But anyways, it's good training and I appreciate that his continued effort and, and learning and developing and give him praise for that. The other person is our own mayor. Who just received. Let me just read the, the letter from Deanna Dawson from the AWC. Says to your mayor Thomas, congratulations on your completion of AWC's Advanced Certificate of Municipal Leadership, the CML. This certificate recognizes your continued efforts to seek out advanced professional development opportunities as well as your volunteer community service. And enclosed was the, is the certificate of municipal leadership and a lapel pin, which I will give to you in a second here. Again, she says, congratulations on your accomplishment. And I hope you will display your certificate and wear your lapel pin with pride. And I echo that. I say, congratulations. And thank you for putting that extra effort and continuing your education and improving your skills and abilities. That's that speaks highly of you. I appreciate it and on our behalf that you put that time and effort in it. So. Let me get your pen here.
I wouldn't expect him. I love it. Thank you.
We have a certificate. The AWC Advanced Certificate of Municipal Leadership, recognizing Mayor Jeffrey Thomas's city of Monroe for the successful completion of AWC Certificate of Municipal Leadership Training Program.
Thank you very much, council member Davis. And I wasn't appreciate, I wasn't appreciating. I'm, I'm operating on three hours of sleep. I wasn't expecting this. Thank you very much.
That's a small file then.
We all know, you can, I know everybody knows where I was and yeah, I no complaints. I just, my, my words are just not coming out tonight. So thank you very much, everybody. It's been a real pleasure serving our community and I do encourage people, you know, if you get a chance to do the certified municipal leader, I did that when I was a council member, the advance has some more training and has some more things you do. And I suspect that if, if each of you kind of looked at what you've done, you probably qualify for the CML and you're probably are very close to, or you qualify for the advanced CML. And I encourage you all to do it. So thank you very much. Thank you. Council member Fulter, go ahead.
I'm just a note about the farmers markets have been going on again. And those of you who have not yet made it, please make an effort. Janelle does a very good job getting everyone gathered there and the weather's been fine. And also we have a city booth there. So pop on by and say hello to everybody and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council member. Council member Kenny, go ahead.
So this morning was the very first of a summer-long program called a youth running club here in Monroe. And I'm really excited about this. It's giving kids a healthy outlet during the summer. It's at Lake Ty and it's every Tuesday from eight thirty to nine thirty. It's organized by a teacher at Park Place, who also has organized a sixth grade running club and it's open to kids from sixth grade through twelfth grade. And we had a real good turnout this morning and I just love the idea that there's something wholesome and free for kids to do when they're out of school. So that's really exciting. There was also an article about it in the Snohomish Tribune. And you know, selfishly, it prepares kids to be really good runners for cross-country and track. So I'm all about that. Also just wanted to comment on the block party that was last Friday. We had about, our museum was open and we're hoping to get some folks in and we had thirty-five people come in. And we also were gifted with a lovely quilt and two pillowcases that were crafted by the Queen Bee Quilters from the senior center. So we were very pleased with that generous donation and that allows us to start our quilt raffle. Two dollar tickets and they're available at our museum on Wednesdays and Saturdays, and then they'll be at the cabin, the Shanahan Cabin at the fair. So I hope some of you were at the block party, a really great event. And again, planned by the chamber and Janelle just does a great job. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Kenny. Council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I have been to one of the farmers markets so far and look forward to more. I wanted to talk about the, see if we have an update on the speed limits and the traffic calming devices, speed bumps that we were kind of talked about on one seventy-ninth near Park Place Middle. I think the last time I talked to someone at staff, they, I don't know if it was you, Jake, or someone said that that's in the works or that's something. So I'd love to get an update on that, whether it's verbally now or afterwards, it's fine.
Public Works. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
The project is underway, so we are expecting to have a final deliverable towards the end of this calendar year. Your ears must have been burning because I said council member Hanford's going to ask about this soon. I need an update last week. So in our public works report in July, you can expect that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then I'm also just wanted to say that I know we've talked about this before, but I wanted to just bring it up to be the squeaky wheel, but I'm very much looking forward to in our new chambers, having oval seating where I can actually see where we can all actually see each other.
Yeah.
Because it is we're doing the best we can with this space, but the straight in the line thing is not conducive to us having a a robust connecting visually meeting with each other. So. So I'm looking forward to that in a couple of years. Not sure what the school district, I've never been in their chambers area, so I'm not sure what that looks like, but. And then lastly, I just want to wish everyone a safe and enjoyable Fourth of July next week and very thankful for our freedom. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, council member Hanford. Council member Fisher, go ahead.
Yeah, I went to the farmer's market. We go pretty much every week. It's really convenient for us because we're able to ride our bikes, including the kids. And we go down there and it's, it's, it's really cool. If you have not done it yet, it is an awesome place to go. There's also, also some really cool programs there for seniors where they actually get an eighty dollar card. I think it's through the county where they can spend at the farmer's market for fresh food and produce. And so that's actually kind of a, a pretty cool program. The city booths that are there and also at the block party, which I attended, are so awesome. They're so fun. Everybody that's there, city staff are very social. They're like out in the street at the block where they're out in the street, getting people to come in and make comments and pestering them to make sure that they thought of really good comments and kind of getting down to how they really felt about the four questions that were up there. So I love seeing out, seeing them out there. Of course, my family is a big part of that. Even my kids are just like, well, we love this and we would change that. Our favorite song would be this. So. So that was kind of cool. So the block party was great. Go to the farmer's market if you can. And then the woo-woo code, obviously we know was pushed back to October first. I haven't really talked about that too much, just because it's a state law and there's not a whole lot we can do about it. I read through it because it's kind of a wheelhouse. There's some really good ideas and the state has in there. And I think that there's probably some things that are appropriate. The mile and a half buffer that makes our entire city part of the woo-woo code, I think is absolutely ridiculous. I think there are some driveway lengths and things like that that are a good idea. But just trying to get, just getting that stuff off of my chest. I know it's going to be a state thing, but man, it's, it just really seems like it's going to put a lot of pressure on a lot of small communities. So, and historic buildings. So if you start renovating them, you're going to have to renovate them. I think it's probably going to take away a lot of that historic feeling. So that's it. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you, council member Fisher. Council member Scarborough, go ahead.
Well, I can only echo the people who spoke about the block party because we were there too, the wife and I, and it was it looked like fun was had by all. It looked like it was very well attended. I think Janelle did a good job and we probably should give her a shout out. One thing that I had talked about with, with Janelle about the farmer's market was the fact that she has to I think load and unload all the tables in her truck to move them there, to set up things. And she wished she had a small enclosed trailer that she could have all that store stuff stored in so she could hook it up, take it down, take it outside it up, take it down, put it in a trailer and take it wherever she parked it at night. And I, I keep looking around town to see if I see anything that's Mike Veeper sale cheap that we might think about some way or another to help her out. Maybe Ms. Kenny can talk to her a little more about that. She may be reluctant to think that she should ask for that, but I think it warrants looking into maybe from contributions or something. We could find something for her if it weren't too much money, but other than that, everything was very nice. And I don't know if I said this last week or two weeks ago, but I've had a lot of comments on our way, way finding signs, being absolutely wonderful and nice. And they look very good and, and they seem to be very helpful. That's all I got.
Thank you, council member Scarborough. All right, we're going to go ahead and go on to staff and department reports. We're going to start off with chief Charlie. Chief Charlie, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Within your packet, you have our department report. I just pointed out a couple of quick things. As you can see, there are under significant events on May sixteenth, Officer Alex Thomas conducted a traffic stop. And we have been combating and finding ways to impact and interdict in controlled substance drug violations. And this was one method that was done and proved quite successful, as you can read on. So we're grateful that we'll again be able to we're grateful that we'll again be able to interdict and help do our part to keep the community safe in that arena. And then I'll just double down on the farmer's market talk. It was, it's absolutely gonna be a phenomenal event tomorrow and please stop by and see the police department will be doing our drone show. So we will be flying that and hopefully not crashing it. So come out and watch.
Thank you for not crashing it or having the canine go after it like a frisbee. All right. Any questions for Chief Charlie? All right, next report. Oh, go ahead. Oh, all right. I've got two lights on now. Thank you, thank you, Chief Charlie. The next one is the Finance Department Report. I'll turn to Director Hassard, who is right there. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the May two thousand twenty-three finance report is in your packets. There are a couple of things that I would like to highlight and then also include some information that is not in the packet. The first thing that I wanted to highlight is that the real estate excise tax report that is in there, returns every month have been interesting to say the least. It does look like a little bit of a roller coaster. However, we are ahead for the year and we're actually ahead pretty healthfully. May came in at just under seven point eight percent. June, if you, for those that were eagle-eyed, was attached to the bond update agenda bill because of course we are targeting real estate excise tax first quarter percent to pay those bonds. And June came in at a little over sixty-five percent higher than budget. So that's what I mean by that roller coaster. Either way, it's positive news for us. It'll be interesting to see if that continues, that trend continues. On the investment side of the house, you know, we do, you'll have a pretty decent investment portfolio that we manage and short-term interest rates have creeped up over five percent for the first time in years. And what that means for us, while we are pretty locked in with all of our long-term interest rates and we use a maturity ladder with regards to those, we have been putting more excess cash into the local government investment pool to take advantage of those short-term rates. Overall, just as a point of reference, through May of two thousand twenty-three, our investment income, both from short and long-term in interest earnings is a little under four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Interest investment earnings through May of two thousand twenty-two was just under eighty-two thousand dollars. So that interest rate increasing has really made a difference for our bottom line with regards to our investment portfolio here at the city. So just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention. The last thing that I wanted to bring up was not in the report. Snohomish County has sent out this year's press release with regards to where they see assessed values going throughout the county as well as for individual jurisdictions. And what they are anticipating is that assessed values on average throughout the entire county is decreasing by about three point nine percent. Of course, different jurisdictions in the county are increasing or decreasing at different rates. Residential, they're showing are decreasing, however, commercial is going up. So with that, they said for Monroe, overall, we are looking at a four-point-one percent decrease in assessed values. Now, that does not mean property taxes are going down. It does not mean that property taxes are going up. Property taxes in the state of Washington are based on what the council action is every year and it's based on what we collected in the aggregate every year. What that will mean is currently for two thousand twenty-three, the rate per thousand that we collect is a little over eighty-six cents per every thousand dollars of assessed value. So assessed value goes down and the amount that we collect stays the same, that rate per thousand will go up a little bit. We don't know yet where that will land because it is also gonna be dependent on what new construction values are going to be. Thinking about it conservatively and even though we have a biannual budget, we do have to adopt the property taxes on an annual basis. We'll be coming back with that with, or to you here towards the end of the year. I am anticipating and we're always pretty conservative with new construction, that rate per thousand not gonna change too much, quite frankly. It'll probably go up a couple of cents, but you know, a point of reference, last year that rate per thousand was a dollar two that we were collecting. So with, so that decrease just in one year was a direct result of assessed values rising so high over the last few years. So lot of, you know, I could, I could spend hours talking about property taxes and the inverse relationship between assessed values and what we collect, but I'm sure you guys don't want to do that tonight, but I did want to bring that to your attention. It's out there. We'll talk about it more as we get into the budget adjustment period. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. If I remember your email correctly, last year rates increased very substantially. I think it was by ten percent or something.
Assessed values, yes.
Assessed value, yeah. Not the rates, but the assessed values, yeah. So, and we've been going up for some time, but there was a significant peak last year. And this year, there's actually a negative.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Hassard? All right, saying no, we'll go ahead and move on to Public Works Department Report with Director Roberts. Director Roberts, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Lots of reports tonight. I'll keep it quick. The US Two Shared Path is done. If you haven't walked on it or biked on it or done something else with wheels on it, please feel free, go ahead. It's really great, I promise. Go check it out. Sixty days ahead of when the fair opens this year. So I'm very excited that we got that, that bridge put in, that final last piece finished. And the light should be up now by the time this report is published prior. I think they're up. Second thing in there is everybody else is talking about the farmer's market. Why not us? So Public Works was out there. Community development was nice enough to let us tag along and kind of sidle up to theirs. We built a little lean-to next to their tent. And we, we, we take, we take the people that don't want to talk to them about the future and just try to introduce them into a water conservation kit or something about stormwater. So, you know, we're out there just trying to get our name out with the public. So that's the report for this evening. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Director Roberts. Any questions for Director Rip?
Just go with it.
Director Iris. All right, okay. All right, thank you very much. We're gonna go with Jake. I know that's, that'll be easier for, for now. All right, next department report then would be Human Services and Coordinator Adams is not here. Are you presenting, Administrator?
I am not presenting because I thought Zach was presenting. Then I look around the room and he's left.
If anybody has any questions about the Human Services Report.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, yeah, just reach out.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next one then is ten point five. This is Parks Department Report with Director Farrell. Director Farrell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So yes, our report from May, park activities, work being done, events and project updates is all in your packet. So I will just speak briefly about something outside of that. Just a heads up for next week. If you recall, last year, I received some great feedback from Council regarding protection of our synthetic turf fields at Lake Ty, which are normally open to the public during the day. So we'd like to allow as much public access as possible. Yeah, it'd also be responsible property managers. So like last year, we will leave the fields open until five PM and then on the fourth. And then they will be locked through the remainder of the day and through the night. And then we'll reopen them the following morning. So we just want to give you a heads up about that, just like last year. I thought it went really well. We'll be doing the same thing. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Farrell. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to take an opportunity to compliment Mike on his work. As you'll probably remember, Mike, we started when I was at Transportation Department and we started working with you as the Parks Person, which was a long time ago now, I think. And just want to commend you on the job you do and the dedication you have to the projects and how you do your best to find money to relieve the money that we have to spend from the taxpayers and maybe not setting up, but I'd like to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. Any other comments for, go ahead, Councilmember Hanford?
I'll second that. Also, I, I just wanted to say, walk around Lake Ty this morning. Just so thankful for our park there and how beautiful it is and it's just looking so great. And it's nice to see there's not a ton of water bottles and trash laying around. I've seen it sometimes when there are, but it was nice to see everybody's taking care of it and yeah, doing a great job. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from Council or questions? All right, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and go on to the next one. This is item ten point six, Community Development Report with Director Bailey. I understand that oh, there he is. I was looking under the attendees list. Go ahead, Stacy.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have the packet in front of you. Just a couple of highlights from you is we did three hundred and twenty-four inspections for the month of May. Happy to say that a hundred and sixty of them were for the new wayfinding signs throughout the city. There's eighty-two signs that we were looking at. Making sure that we can coordinate with Public Works and the vendor to make sure those were happening and try to stay timely on that. As Councilmember Scarborough said, they, they do look pretty amazing. We're hearing a lot of good comments from that. The addition to the Boys and Girls Club, we actually just gave a final on that today and we're in the process of printing up the certificate of occupancy. So that was pretty exciting for them to get going on that and that get finalized. So hopefully the kids can be using that here in the near future. Business licenses, we actually had eighty new business licenses. This are in May. Ninety-eight were also renewals. So out of that, ninety-seven were actually in the city limits of Monroe, which is those continue to come in, which is good news. And the last one I've got for you, it's a big one for me. Councilmember Fisher mentioned it as well as the the building codes had moved. You know, last time I was before you, we were kind of in a big rush to meet the July one deadline. The state did vote to postpone that back on May twenty-fourth. And it's looking like October twenty, I believe it's ninth is the actual implementation date in the state. So I am going to be coming back to Council, I believe, the twenty-fifth for second reading on that. There is a couple minor amendments that we were kind of made aware of. So we're gonna take advantage of the delay so we can make sure we get that one right. So with that, that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Krizel. Any questions? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you, Stacy. I had one question in your report and it's regarding the new, five new residential units at two twenty-six Madison Street. I did notice that is a historic home and it was just questioning when that is scheduled for demo.
I have not heard from the contractor on that one yet. So if I find out, I can make sure that myself or one of my staff lets you know.
That would be great. That house is actually in our book at the museum. So we always need to make note of what's going on with that. Thank you so much.
You bet.
All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and move on to any other questions for our building official? All right. Thank you very much, Stacy.
Thank you.
On the agenda then is item eleven point one. This is City Administrator Report Extended Agenda Administrator Night. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So the things that we have coming up on the extended agenda is a cancellation of the meeting on July fourth. So that meeting will be canceled. Looking forward then to July eleventh, we will have a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting. We will be bringing back then the federal legislative update at that meeting for review by the committee and then a regular council business meeting. And so far, the items on that agenda are just a couple of housekeeping items under consent. The approval of accounts payable, payroll and meeting minutes. And then under new business, we have the resolution for an interfund loan with Becky Hassert. The ordinance for the school district capital facility plans updates, that'll be first reading with Amy Bright. And then an ordinance for the two thousand twenty-three budget amendment, again, first reading with our Finance Director Becky Hassert. Under reports, we have the usual reports from the departments and then, of course, my report and the extended agenda. So that's all we've got so far posted for the July eleventh council meeting.
Right. Any questions from Council on the extended agenda or announcements you will not be present? Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
I will be attending remotely because I work on the eleven. So for both those meetings, Legislative Affairs and Council.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? I keep doing that. You're the third person that's happened to at least. Sometimes I turn off the microphones or you turn them off while I'm turning them off and then they turn back on. All right. Any other, oh, no worries. Any other questions on the agenda or comments? All right. Let's go ahead and on to the City Administrator Report Administrator Night.
Thank you. We already had an announcement and I will say it again. Hopefully people will remember and not drive here for the council meeting on July eleventh. We'll continue to put out those reminders up to the day of the meeting. But again, for those that live on the east side of the city, you'll drive by here and you'll still have plenty of time to get to the meeting on the west side of town. For those of you that drive from the west side of town to the east, you'll just be taking a nice tour back the other direction again. A couple of kudos too. I wanted to just give a kudos to our Parks Crew. Several of Councilmembers mentioned the block party that happened last Friday. If you noticed, the overflowing trash cans. Our Parks Crew came in just as soon as that event ended and really did a great job at emptying out all the trash cans and picking up everything and kind of restoring the street for business on Saturday morning. So if you could reach out to your Parks Crew, let them know how much I appreciate that. It was, it was really encouraging. I was a little concerned when I left the meeting and or left the event and the trash cans were overflowing. And I thought, oh, you know, we're gonna have a problem tomorrow morning, but they were right there on the spot. Also, a kudos that came from inside the planning department for LeAnn Barr. LeAnn has just been extremely dedicated to filing and indexing and archiving community development records. She's been working on that project since I arrived more than five years ago now. And she just continues to do a really great job. One of the things we've done in preparing to close this building and move out temporarily and remodel City Hall is to actually go through all of our records. We've had set aside record roundup days. And if you've ever had to move, you know, when you just keep opening those closet doors and you're just amazed at the things that are still in there. That's kind of the feeling that we're having at City Hall right now. But a shout out to LeAnn Barr just for really working hard. There's a lot of records that come through community development and she's just done a bang-up job at, at practically getting that down to zero and getting things out of here. So it's, it's great. Some of those records are now with the state archivist, so they're you know, permanently held and, and others, like many things in all of our homes. It was really time for them to go. Also want to give kudos to our Public Works Water Operating Division. On June thirteenth, the city received our two thousand twenty-three sanitary water survey report and staff from the Office of Drinking Waters, the inspector came out and in that letter, he noted just how impressed he was with the water system records and Monroe's operating team and just a really deep understanding of the systems technical aspects. And he noted just how driven the team was to provide the best possible drinking water to Monroe system customers. So it's always good to know that your drinking water team is on top of their work, right? Nobody wants to have drinking water that isn't meeting state standards or exceeding those. So kudos to our Water Operating Division for doing such a great job. And then I wanted to add, just because Councilmember Davis had mentioned how important continuing education is, that our commander, Paul Ryan, just recently graduated from the University of Washington Executive Masters of Public Administration Program. So kudos to Paul for taking on that effort. He's got a family and works full-time and that plus, and yet he still managed to go back and get his executive masters of public administration. So just really proud of him too. Yep, there you go. And another one for the fold. And that's all for my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Administrator Night for the report? All right. Thank you. As for my report, I did a proclamation, Independence Day. So you'll see in your packets, proclamation for Independence Day. I do wish you all a very happy Fourth of July. Please be careful if you choose to shoot off fireworks and you've already heard the notes from Mike about the synthetic turf fields. We will be putting a reminder, I think, on a reader board that can be seen from five two-two.
It could be seen from space.
Seen from space. Just as a reminder, our code allows for fireworks to be launched. July fourth only from
And to eleven fifty-nine.
Yeah. So
Few times.
And it's, it's the same thing with the county. So when the sign, you know, when the reminder goes up, that will apply for the county as well. But again, if anybody has any questions, that those are the timeframes and stay off the synthetic turf fields and be very careful. We don't want to start any fires and we don't want people to get injured. I'd like the fire department to be very bored on Fourth of July if we can, as, as well as EMS and our law enforcement folks. So and then also Councilmember Scarborough and Hanford expressed their appreciation for the work that Councilmember Scarborough and Hanford expressed their appreciation for the work that the Director Farrell's been doing. But in addition to that, it's Parks and Recreation Month. And so while you're out there enjoying the parks, enjoy them just a little bit more and, and make certain you take some time to express appreciation. For the staff that are doing that. And I do really appreciate how this council does prioritize our parks. Not all, not all cities and counties do that and. And that's one of the reasons why Laura and I chose to move here. Back in two thousand was because of the parks and the trails that were here. So thank you. And then Monroe this week, volume nine, edition twenty-five is there in your packets and. I think that's all that I have to report. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right. Would you have a need for an executive session this, this evening? I don't think it's going to be a very long session, so I will. Say that we will do this in seven minutes. Of course, council may have additional questions. So we are now going to go into executive session for. Potential litigation person to RCW forty-two point thirty point one ten subsection one subsection little I. And property acquisition person to the RCW forty-two point thirty point one ten subsection one subsection B. For an initial seven minutes to begin at twenty, I'm sorry, at eight, ten PM on the clock. There may be, there may be action to follow and any extensions will be announced for the record. So we are now in executive session. All right, we're back off of, back out of executive session. We have no further business this evening unless there is objection. We are adjourned. There being no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody. I'll see you in a couple of weeks and have a happy, safe Fourth of July. We're adjourned.